This is the East Hampton City Council Property Committee. It is currently 5:16 on January 28th, 2020. Committee members currently present are myself, Owen Zarath, JP Quazinski, and Lindsay Rothschild. There are no minutes that I am aware of to approve. Our agenda this evening is to... Our two agenda items, that's ongoing discussion of evaluation, discussion of city-owned property for locations for municipal dog park, as well as requests and project inventory city-owned properties. I will probably be discussing mostly the former. Is there any public speak time that does not involve either of the two agenda items that I mentioned? No? Okay. So we'll proceed to discussion of the dog park. I think everyone here is pretty familiar with this project. The intention is to look at potential city parcels, which we've fairly narrowed down at this point, to apply for a Stanton Dog Park grant. These grants contain two phases, a design grant and a construction grant. The design grant is for up to $25,000 of design, and then there's a separate application phase for up to $225,000 with a 10% match for construction. We have identified a number of city parcels, which I can include but are not limited to a parcel on Park Street behind what is known as the Treehouse Community. There's also a neighboring parcel off of Park Street as well, one off of Highland Avenue that used to be a Boy Scout camp. There's also one off of Lincoln Street, which is behind the parcel's place, the old part of the street's school. Two at the end of Oliver Street, one which contains the solar field and one across the street from there. One off the corner of Polio and Hendrick Streets. Am I listening? And so there was a public meeting on November 21st to discuss these and get public input. We received CPA money around $9,000, and through the help of Berkshire Design Group, had some preliminary designs presented at that November 21st meeting, asked for public input for both pros and cons about all the available parcels. And then there was a non-binding public vote that narrowed down the potential sites to some of the sites that were provided in Non-Tuck Park, as well as the Oliver Street site across the street from the solar field. Now, to go back, when these discussions first originated, I had the opportunity to sit down with Director John Mason, as well as some other members of the Parks Commission, and they were pretty clear for very reasonable reasons why Non-Tuck Park would likely not be a viable site for the dog park. And so while there were parcels identified that within the park, and there did seem to be some public interest, I'll turn the floor over in a second to Director Mason and then Planner Bag, why Non-Tuck Park would likely not be having a dog park anytime soon. But before I proceed, are there any preliminary statements that either of the councilors who are members of the committee would like to make? And would the public like to have any input at this point? Any statements about the project thus far? Okay, so I will turn it over to Director John Mason, Director of our amazing Parks and Rec Department, just to discuss kind of his input around the project, as well as why Non-Tuck Park is not the most viable site for this project.
Thank you all. The Park Commission, this has been kicked around going back all the way to early 2013. It was part of the open plan that the city put together, Open Space and Recreation Plan. Dog Park has always been kind of put in there as a thought, so it's not a new thought for the commission. It's something that's been talked about through the years. And, you know, they've always had a support for the notion of a dog park, just not inside of Non-Tuck Park. So there has been, you know, community interest. It was noted way back when I was on that committee, that opened Space and Recreation Plan together in 2013, so I have some background on the process that we went through. It's funny, it was listed as a...it's something seven years out, and that was done in 2013 and we're seven years out and we're at the cusp of it. So I guess it was good planning on, we nailed one. So with that being said, you know, they talked about, you know, over the last 10 years, I've been here 10 full years now, how much the department has changed and how much responsibilities have changed within the department. The structure is not the same as it used to be when I first walked through the doors. We're kind of a victim of our own success. The amount of people that come to the park on weekends and just in general during the season has changed our whole staffing structure. Without adding more staff, we rearranged staffing structure to meet all the activities within the city that are at parks, whether it's Millside, Bordenmont here, Non-Tuck Park, all those things, which are...which makes it such a great place to visit or live in East Hampton. It's, you know, it's why people love coming here, is because we have so much to offer, whether it's passive recreation or active recreation. With that being said, you know, we talked about all the growth and we've had, you know, the maintenance burden that's associated with that. Like I said, we've had no additional staff members, no additional funding to meet all the projects that have been added to our department. You know, park access also, the park is closed November to April. A day like today is a prime example, where you look out and there's no snow anywhere, and then if you walk in the park, there's snow everywhere. It's still a frozen tundra down there. So it's...it can be dangerous. There's limbs down, things like that. We don't have a skeleton winter crew, even play most of our guys off this time of year. And the staff that is remaining, there's maintenance on all the equipment between the cemetery and the Parks Department, and then, you know, a day like today, they'll go out and start looking at picking up branches and things like that at fall and so forth. One of the concerns with the site at Non-Tuck Park also is the environmental concern. We took a really good look at the potential site and how many trees that would be cleared in the clearing of that area. It is sloped severely, and that slope leads to Whitebrook, Whitesbrook. Also, there's some ravines in there that may be water channels throughout. So we're worried about environmental impact with any type of clear cutting and things like that that might propose. Child safety, you know, that Pavilion 2 area, that's home camp, Non-Tuck Junior Camp Program. They'll be right in the front of that post-dog park area. Not that people be, you know, let their dogs out as soon as they get off the door, but there's going to be activity, kids, balls flying, things like that. You know, dogs, they want to chase. They're active, and I'm a dog lover, so, you know, I know. So, you know, it's just one of the things we're concerned about. And then overall, our infrastructure, we have a lot of aging facilities, ball fields, pool, stonehouse, that require a lot of our resources, both with employees and financial resources. So we are looking towards that end of trying to make sure we can maintain what we have because, you know, we have...there's been a lot of growth in building and additions to what the park is responsible for, and it's all going to age up. And to stay on top of those types of things is a priority because we don't want things to go into repair. And then we talk about safety issues that are associated with things like that. Yeah, this has been, like I said, for seven years. It's been a discussion point for Parks and Rec. We haven't turned a blind eye to it. We understand that it's something the community is interested in. We support that interest, just not at Non-Tuck.
Thank you, Director Mason. I think that outlines your concerns and some of the potential restrictions around about putting a dog park at Non-Tuck. I'll open it back up to the councilors, members of the committee, if you have any specific questions for Director Mason regarding the statement.
I certainly appreciate some of the concerns. It sounds like park access being closed, the closed part of the year. Usually we have snow this time.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, there's snow on the park though, trust me.
So you'd expect that a dog park wouldn't likely be used this time of year. Maybe December till March, maybe November to late, I don't know. Yes.
Like a good example of how the weather is different inside the park compared to like Daly Field. Like you look at Daly Field and you look out there and it's just, it looks nice, and it looks like you can start growing grass.
Right.
And then you just drive 100 feet into the park and then you're like, where am I? It's a completely different environment, so dark, it doesn't get a lot of sun, the snow just...I mean, as someone who coaches softball knows that, you know, knocking on the door like April, you know, March 15th, there was no snow up here, but like drive down the park and you'll see all the snow you want, you know, so it hangs around.
I know when I went out to the park on weekends, I found that probably there were every five minutes, somebody coming in with one or two or more dogs into the park, some on leash and some not on leash. So dogs are going into the park with their owners all the time, year-round.
Yeah.
So it's not like...and the road's plowed by the water department.
Water department does, yeah.
Not the park. The park doesn't do the plowing, the water department does. And because there's a well in the back and also some foot that needs to be accessed. And it's a very long run to coach all the way through the whole park to the very end. So there is the argument that there isn't access.
There's a difference between access and legal access.
I know. And it may need to be widened.
But so once we...if we say we're open, then we're responsible to make sure we are sand salt, we are going on...
Someone's responsible, whether it's the city.
Yeah. So they're happy to be responsible. So when we say the park is closed, we have taken away our responsibility to basically use it at your own risk at that point, so that's the reason for that.
I would also ask if...I understood that we were proceeding with this whole discussion because the park and Recreation Commission was going to back up and manage the dog park in some ways. Is that true or not?
Not as far as I'm concerned. That'd be news to me if they were my department. I heard there was going to be a Friends of the Dog Park.
I heard that there's going to be a Friends of the Dog Park, and they'll have a primary responsibility.
That was my question to answer, thank you. Because I appreciate that you are living on your financial and your staffing resources, so I was wondering if those were going to be taxed, so wherever the dog park is.
We weren't planning...yeah, we weren't planning on having it under our umbrella because of, you know, there's, you know, the staffing concerns of being out there, taking care of all the things that are associated with adding a dog park.
So that leaves me, I guess, to the question that if it were in the park, could whoever would be managing it at another location be managing it in the park? So I'm just asking, I totally appreciate your reasoning.
Yeah, it'd be almost similar to the, you know, Little League has their own group, soccer has their own group. They contribute with volunteers, financially, things like that, so there is precedent for that, that the groups, you know, help take ownership of city property to offset costs that are associated with it.
I have a question from Mr. Bag. We had to pay for a study, and I had thought that the study had indicated that the park site on the right was not a drop-off or fill required. Is that an accurate description or...that would make a hell of a difference, I think, if you have to bring in that much fill. That would make the site, in my mind, really undesirable.
The area, the proximate area was identified as potentially, could potentially locate or like could potentially accommodate a dog park. The feasibility study that we underwent with Berkshire Design Group was not the in-depth sort of analysis of all the sites, so...
But it was supposed to deal with wetlands and buffer zones and areas that would impact, I presume, that's what we were paying for.
Well, you know, I think...
Not to go out and delineate everything, but to take a look and say, okay, it looks like there's 200 by 200 feet, 200 by 300 feet, that would make sense without and be without outside the border of the wetland.
Yeah, I will...I guess I will say that this...so that there was originally a different location. There's two sites within Non-Tuck that were originally identified, so the first playground at the very entrance, and then next to the newer playground, once your interior side, those were the two that were originally kind of identified to at least assess. And then I think, I think it was at your urgent, Councilor Quazinski, that we focused on this other location across the street. So they do show 200-foot riverfront area. You know, I think that there is a difference between what you're asking about and what John was identifying as removal of trees on the slope that is in relatively close proximity to water. You know, that Berkshire Design Group definitely did not get into that level of detail in terms of erosion or...
Some of the concerns I think should be available.
Yeah, I think. Right.
If we were to proceed to.
Right, right. And I think what I was going to say is that, you know, from a planning perspective, we just really simply could not list or consider these city properties without including Non-Tuck. So I think we all talked about that, again, from a planning perspective, to not have included Non-Tuck, we would have gathered 100 people who immediately, the first thing they would have said is, where's Non-Tuck? So like for process-wise, we had to. But I think what I think is important, at least at this moment, is to just kind of look back at what we asked Berkshire Design Group to do, which is kind of a site selection. So from these, from the couple, from the nine properties that we listed, it makes sense from a site selection that Non-Tuck was ranked pretty high because people wanted it kind of close to town, but away from residences, and it certainly fits that. But what we did not ask them to do, and I think this is what we're talking about tonight, and I think what Director Mason's memo says, is sort of the implications, or the logistical issues, or the budget, the budget impact. So that wasn't what we asked Berkshire Design Group to look at, but I think that's where we're at now. And I think, you know, I think generally speaking, and I think this is what this group we talked about tonight, is it seems like perhaps the City Council is the right group to kind of hear some of this and make a decision, knowing the site selection process and some of the implications of Non-Tuck, as to whether we have selected a preferred site in the fore. So I mean, I think that's what we're going to talk about. And I just have two more notes here. So for the Stanton Design Grant, you know, that was the expectation, was that there was one kind of preferred site, generally community-supported, and that's why we didn't really have that until sort of now. I think, you know, that's why we're leaning towards the Oliver Street site, to bring the full City Council to see if that's desirable as your, as the final decision-makers who have the authority over budgets, you know, that's why it's important, I think, there's a decision at the City Council level to decide to move forward or not with one of the sites. I really appreciate John's mentioning the Open Space Plan, I think it's good, I think we are precisely on time to just assess this, Dog Park, seven years out from the Open Space Plan. And then I think something, though, that reveals itself here that we may need to look at is there is some kind of requirement in the construction grant. So we are talking about two different grants. There's a design grant, which I'm not going to say is no strings attached, but we've done the legwork, we might have a site, we can apply for the design grant. It does not, from my understanding, it doesn't commit us to anything. But the construction grant was the one where I do recall that there is a requirement that some city department be the stopgap, the fail safe, that if Friends of the Group were to go to bump or fail, that there was some department who underwrite it committed to maintaining it. So we have to envision it gets built, and if there is some scenario that doesn't work out, there was, I think, in the grant requirement for construction, that there is someone who signs off on, will take responsibility for that. So that needs to provide us with an understanding of what that would look like, because I think that that is part of the construction grant.
So, yes, and so I think it is important to delineate kind of all the steps so far that this has kind of been a multi-phased approach, that initially started with a very casual discussion about identifying potential parcel, and then asking for the CPA money to kind of judge those up with some kind of overlay, so to speak, and then narrow those down to get to kind of the next threshold, which is the design grant. And then if we can, A, identify a parcel that people agree with in order to proceed with an application for the design grant, then that puts us at a much bigger threshold, which Planner Bag identified, which is we have to have a discussion about, A, can we afford funds or can we find funds to help match the construction phase? Who is going to be responsible for maintenance? Have a more robust discussion with city departments of the Batman plan. So the ultimately getting a design via design grant does not commit us to anything, but is, it is the next step. And then that triggers, that triggers a lot of discussion, including really getting buy-in from the community in terms of who's going to ultimately be a citizen or community-wide organization or committee that's going to be the primary responsible party for managing this. And while I'm certainly happy to participate, it's not going to be me. You need people to step up. So, but so here we are, I think it was a really reasonable explanation from Director Mason, and to be fair too, from my standpoint, you know, when there were preliminary discussions early on, both of the director and members of the commission, they said, no, we're not...we already have the discussion that there's not going to be a dog park at Non-Tuck, the commission will vote for it. I don't want to create the optics that, well, the community really wants it, and so what you said is all well and good, but we're just going to steamroll you to put one in there. And so I think both the director and planner kind of outlined why it was necessary to kind of include those parcels. I don't really think it's fair to move forward with more discussion there unless there was some really compelling reason to do so in terms of those parcels at Non-Tuck. So that leaves us with the parcel across the street from Oliver Street, from the solar landfill. And Planner Bag, I'll turn it back over to you in a second, but my understanding is now we have kind of an upgraded overlay of this particular parcel, some upgraded schematic design along with estimated costs, and would you like to talk about that a little bit more?
Sure. So what the committee members have is a sort of the, one of the final products of our work with Berkshire Design Group. The goal was to do this exercise about site assessments, and we, based on the input, you know, we got public input about Non-Tuck, but based on the input from the Parks and Rec Department, we really just asked Berkshire Design Group to just kind of give us the schematic drawing and the cost estimate for the Oliver Street site. And so it is on the opposite side of the solar array. It's a city-owned parcel of approximately eight acres, I believe. And the, you know, the cost estimate now as sort of schematically provided is $275,000. So the idea is that Stanton would pay for up to $225,000 of that construction cost. So that gives us a little bit of the framework for what we're talking about, that there's a gap, there's automatically a gap. And one of the logical places to consider that gap funding would be through the Community Preservation Act funding, so CPA. But what the benefit of going to the design grant is that that design will get fully drawn out to construction-ready documents, and then as a result of the design grant, you'll have an updated construction cost estimate. Expectation would be that the cost would go up, hopefully not a lot, but I mean, the cost, finding a project where the costs go down is pretty rare. So the expectation would be that the cost would go up slightly, but we would have a fully fleshed-out understanding of what it would take. And then there would be another decision to be made, presumably by City Council, kind of, as to whether the community wants to proceed with going forward with a construction grant. So it would be any gap over 225 plus the 10, 10%. So there's some, there's definitely another decision process that would have to happen to take the next step after. I will say, I guess in full disclosure, I will say that there is at least one residential property nearby where the owners have expressed concern with the site. This eight-acre parcel abuts a single-family residence, although there is a buffer, but, you know, I think that, I do want to say that, you know, the abutting property owner did express concerns. But interestingly, they said that there's trails out there, and so, you know, there could be, there needs to be that consideration of the water, but there could be an opportunity for this marking area to serve a trail or other access too, so it opens up that opportunity.
And that's what I was just going to follow up with, that the installation of a dog park in this particular area actually creates a really nice satellite site for a new recreation zone in the city. I'm not exactly sure how large the parcel is to the north here, how large the zone is to the north here, but there'd be great opportunities there. I mean, we've been discussing a variety of things, mountain bike trails elsewhere, just the opportunity for other hiking trails, and, you know, just looking at the number of spaces in that, in this preliminary design, it'd be great to be able to, you know, continue to plan other phases for just a general recreation area as well. Any other comments from committee members, like Planner Bag just had to say?
Do any trees have to be cut there?
Yes. Yep.
So no more trees or less trees than then?
You know, this, so I, my expectation of the design grant would be a more intensive look at the property. So there was no assessment of the type of trees on either of the sites. I do see a difference, which is that the Oliver Street site does not drain directly into a resource area, so that's one of the differences with Non-Tuck, because I think what Director Mason was pointing out is that that area does slope down, trees would be removed, there would be water flowing right into Whitesbrook. So I think, you know, in terms of environmental sensitivity and tree removal, the Non-Tuck site has a more sensitive habitat in resource areas, whereas, you know, I'm not glorifying tree removal, but, you know, some trees are not of great significance. There's a small area like this with no resource area next to it, and the tree removal is not the same, it's not the same necessarily.
Would we need mayoral support in order to proceed, or can the council do this on their own?
Generally speaking, applying for grants have always been, always contained a mayor's signature. Yes.
I heard you say earlier that the council would make...
Well, I think, you know, I think...
As much as I'd love to have the council make...
The rationale for that... The rationale for that, the rationale for that is that I'm not sure that the planning department should make the decision as which direction we go, nor should necessarily the Parks Secretary. So you, as the elected officials, can give us the guidance, but to make the application, most, every single one that I have applied for has had the mayor's signature as the chief executive officer, unless the overall submitted grant.
So the council would vote to make a request of the mayor to submit the design grant?
Right. And I think the key, the key thing, I think, in grant writing and submitting to the standard condition would be that City Council, you know, understood we did a site selection process. We've heard from Parks and Rec on one of the sites, and we're choosing to proceed with this one site. But that's what Stanton seems to be suggesting they want. They want to know that there's some community support behind that site that's going forward.
I want to give, we have two other members of the council here, councilors, I wanted to give them the opportunity to get any feedback, input questions.
Yes. So back when you had your original public meeting, you said there would be more public meetings. Do you anticipate before you go to a design grant that you would do a presentation so the public can understand, this is the one you're going to go for, this is what it's going to look like, and we're going to go get a design grant for it and let them, because the worst thing we can do is to just go forward and say, this is the one we picked. We know, we told you we were going to tell you, but we're not. So I feel like this, before you go to design, needs to have another public meeting with the full design, all the dollars, what John just said about he's not going to be, you know, someone needs to own this if the friend of the dog park falls through. All of those things need to be very well understood by the public before we go forward.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I could personally see, you know, these figures out on large poster boards and you have a discussion with people with the opportunity to voice concerns, support, et cetera. I don't personally have an objection to that. That's something I was thinking of as well. Councilor Gomez, you have anything to add?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
When I built playground about 20-ish years ago, we were appointed by the City Council to work on behalf of the selectmen, this little town, not a city. So we were appointed, and then we turned it back over to the selectmen when we were done building it. But we had to go through the approval to do it, and then we just did it without, you know, we put everything together and we built the playground. And then when we were done, we handed it back over to the selectmen and said, now you take care of it. We've given you an account where there's money in there for upkeep. So there wasn't a committee appointed to be a city committee. I guess we'd be akin to like the National Economic Steering Committee, right? Wouldn't it be the same concept? We're working for the city as volunteers.
So I'll open it up to more public comment. I'll be to respond. Is there, are there any other public comments at this time left us? So, yes.
One thing that's really important with this grant is that whatever selection site has to be the one. They can't go, there's a community very close by that went through a process, got the money. The neighborhood came back and said, no, we don't want it here. They gave the money back and they're not getting another chance at it. So a unified front of whatever selection is done has to be done.
That's a good point. I think it's important to look at, when we had the last meeting, there were two sites selected, as I recall. One was the Non-Ituk site, which was number one, and number two was the Oliver Street site. I think if we're going to say that we're taking Non-Ituk totally off the table, then would it be fair to look at the other sites at this meeting at the same time?
Revisit the other sites?
Well, to say that we're selecting a site, but Non-Ituk isn't one of the sites now. It's really amongst all the other sites. And it may very well be that Oliver Street becomes the site of choice. But I'm not sure, given if Non-Ituk isn't the site.
Maybe there'd have been a right choice, Marty. Good point.
We don't have Non-Ituk. What would we do?
Well, I mean-
My advocate here, I think, are you?
I have to try and to make sure they're connected to what Councilor Coniff said as well. I mean, I would, can I ask, can I ask a question back to the councilors? I mean, I think, would you ever consider the City Council meeting to be the final public meeting by which this, no, so?
I would.
Right.
Either of people.
I would, I think it would.
So the only thing is, I want to be really clear that it may not sound like, I mean, there's a lot of work that has gone into this process so far, so I will, this is my way of saying that Berkshire Design Group is done with their allocated funds, and they, I believe, you know, from my perspective, they've done what we asked them to do. So I'm very, very sensitive to an additional meeting. I'm hoping, I assume many people are looking at me like the planning department would, figure out the logistics of a final meeting. I'm open to it, but I do not want, I personally, professionally, would not want to revisit all the sites. I think that that process was very purposeful, and regardless of if Non-Ituk was the highest rank, the second highest rank was right there. And I think if we present the implications, if we present why Parks, you know, why it doesn't work in Non-Ituk, I would just be concerned with going back. We would be redoing the process again to, I think we bring Non-Ituk and Oliver Street to a meeting, and we explain what's going on. This doesn't have to be a very long meeting, public comment period, but it would just be resources coming directly from the planning department. So I just want to be clear that Berkshire Design Group would be essentially not present there. So it's, you know, volume must facilitate that.
Wasn't this technically what this was, is you invited the public to this? So aren't we kind of sort of doing it already?
I don't think this was publicized in the way the last one was. And given the volume of people that came to that one?
Yeah, this was not, and so I think, tonight was not intended to be the final, and that's what, the idea was that this would be the discussion and then working it to the full City Council for, what if you held a public hearing? You know, and the only other thing I'd throw out, just in my bag of tricks here, is if a butters, if a butters within 300 feet, that's the comment, or some other distance were notified in the mail that City Council's going to have a public hearing in this final location. Because otherwise, we're, it's the remainder of the community at large who may have some, you know, some other questions or concerns, but it's really going to be this neighborhood that I'm just-
True. But I think messaging, people have to understand it's this, or we're not going to dog park here, or not coming back. We look at, it's got to be really clear that this is our thing. If you don't like this, then we will do without a dog park for the next seven years.
Because we could publicize a City Council public hearing as the final stage of, you know, the East End Dog Park site selection process sort of. But it's worth talking about. I just apologize, because I'm just unraveling the process. Whereas if we hold another community-wide meeting, then after that, we will still then want to bring it to City Council, because the City Council will take that kind of definitive vote or decision that we want to have with the Stanton location. So I'm open to some more discussion.
So, oh, cool.
So I was just going to ask, what's the butters concern, or does it involve family?
Well, in all the sites considered, they established a 150-foot noise buffer. And they did, they did say that there was no, there was no magic to that, but it set some kind of reasonable distance that could be applied in every scenario. So it's 150 feet from a house. And the Oliver Street site exceeds 150 feet. So I don't know if there was specific concerns. A lot of the concerns are generally around, like parking dogs, you know, that sort of thing.
She said trash.
Trash, traffic.
Yeah.
Right.
Dogs that get, I mean, all of them.
But they-
And any side.
Dogs are running, just they're-
In any side, yeah.
I just wanted to say, too, from the standpoint of public input, one person that's here tonight, Jim Ramsey, has been a fundamental participant in this discussion from the beginning, is also in the Parks and Rec Commission. So Jim, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to voice, and you can put-
Yeah. Did they do this for each site? Mythical, or did they do one? I mean, like this imaginary one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did they put this in?
No.
They did the study, cost study for this one, in this one location.
Correct.
They didn't even do the park one they did. So there is no second alternative, like the-
And I think it's-
So this is the second one?
Well, this will, yeah, so-
Park was the first one.
Exactly.
But there was only one plan done with the amount of money that was afforded to be able to-
Because I think it's not, I mean, it's not quite mythical, but it's just not, it's not a full construction level.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's a, oh, I can't remember what they called it.
Preliminary point.
Right, projection.
Preliminary, sure. But that was the directive that we gave them, is they, for $9,000 through CPA, they, we were never going to get it for each of the sites. The final voting, you know, was intended they're going to do this, but then it became abundantly clear that Non-Ituk had some implications that we needed to explore. And so I just will be honest, I mean, we told them not to do that for Non-Ituk because there were issues and concerns that were clear. Because at that- And then we needed to come out of this with at least a cop, a rough cop assessment of what we're talking about.
At that last meeting, it was pretty rough. I mean, I had no clue in that, in that, bailing to that, in the park. I threw everything I had.
Right, yes.
Where did this come from? And then everybody started ranking out the, ranking out the staff, just, and I'm like, that meeting was-
That last meeting was more people.
And I didn't want a dog park near their house.
Yes.
Not so much they wanted one, where they wanted it. They just don't want it here. So they were putting stickers far away from the road as they could. And Non-Ituk, I believe, got the most stickers because everyone went, it's a park. There's dogs everywhere. Put stickers in.
And they went up, getting those people here.
Most of the people figured out, they were not for a dog park. They couldn't care less if there's a dog park. And I still say, half of the people there don't even own dogs.
I don't.
They just, they just want them in their neighborhood.
They did. So, and then the trap, they said more cars would be on Park Street, which was a great thing, like, not the treehouse park, because they were concerned with button road, but right off Park, roadway, there was roadway end, so that's six more cars on Park Street. Well, guess what? I have to go on Park Street to go to ours.
So do I.
It's still the same cars.
So let me, Jeff.
Well, I think, I was just going to say, I think that's the interesting thing about public meetings, is that this meeting actually was a little awkward, but it entirely served its purpose, which is I think we have a very clear indication of where people do not want the dog park. But that's helpful, because I think, I'm still kind of trying to figure out whether we, whether it would be meaningful to have a community-wide, one more meeting to say, here's the site we picked, because very few people are going to, my expectation would be very few people are going to want to come to that, because it's not near that. So if we may be able to-
People won't be at that.
I know, right.
I only say that because that was the promise. We will have more of these meetings.
Right.
You said that. I heard, you, you all said it.
Well, I don't-
And we haven't had one.
I don't disagree, though, that a public hearing is another public meeting. But if you feel that we are not holding up to our word by combining the two?
Sure.
No, and I hear what you're saying, but I also agree for a variety of reasons, and one of which being be able to keep, be able to have a little bit more semblance of order than we experienced at the last meeting, that a public hearing format could kind of kill two birds with one stone. It will get publicized, it'll make sure the press is there, people will have to speak and will have to get up and speak in a certain way, and there'll be a large, you know, public format. And then, and hopefully the planner can do a really nice presentation.
Well, and I think, I think that Parks and Rec-
Parks and Rec is in there.
So, sorry, to jump onto that, is I think if the council saw some other dynamic, you know, you could potentially continue the public hearing, you know, and it would give a more of a formal continuation of the process then. Because that, my fear is that we'd have a community meeting to unveil Oliver Street, but then we would still have to take it to City Council. So I don't know if I'm-
Just a little dashing section.
Well, with all due respect, President Coniff, I actually, I respect your input. And so if you're afraid that we're not giving the public the true opportunity to really weigh in on this prior to bringing it to some sort of public hearing, I think we can kill two birds with one stone.
I agree, and I'm fine with that. I, as long as the messaging is very clear when they walk into the City Council chambers that it's this, or we're not doing one. Like, it'll just become this thing.
Right.
That we just need, and maybe that's how we present it, you know, when you bring this forth to schedule the public hearing, we can make it really clear. We have one site. That's the dog park, or we're not having a dog park. And these are all of the implications of that. John can speak eloquently on why Non-Ituk won't work. We can talk about, what you were talking about, Jeff, in terms of the costs and how that weighs against the grant and what gap might need to be filled, that this isn't the final number. Just lay it all out there and don't sugarcoat it like, we really want this. Just say, look, this is it, it's going to be a big deal, and if this one a butter has a problem with it, we'll have to solve this.
Councilor Gomez, do you, do you want to cover that, what I've been saying?
I agree that people have to know that this one is clearly the only, only choice, but there's a reason why this is not the only choice. The people have to know why this one is the only one. Because Non-Ituk has all these reasons, and the other sites that we brought forth to the audience, because the community doesn't want it. So, and the message has to be clear. And I agree, I think the City Council meeting is a good way to do it. I know people sometimes they feel afraid to talk, they feel intimidated there, but it's our job to, for to feel people more comfortable to talk to us, and I think it's a good, it's a good place to have a meeting here.
Would you guys, would the council, I mean, in this subset of the council, understand that the ask is that City Council would make the decision to go for it or not? So based on what you hear and have heard so far, right, yes. Because I think that's what gives it the most power of bringing it to council, is that you've heard and understood the part of the process, and then it's coming to you for that final decision. Because otherwise, then my concern is that this, I don't, the planning department shouldn't be the department that decides what we're doing. It's more the community.
Should be.
Right, okay.
So here's a couple of things I could do. So, well, let me just ask you one more thing, Mr. Bag, is, is there, it's a rolling application, right? Is there a, some definitive, either timeline or deadline in terms of when we want to apply for this?
I haven't, to be honest, I haven't looked at the Stanton website in a while to know that anything's different, but I would say, no, I don't think that we're under any constraints as to when this happens. I would suggest that we were talking tonight about a potential time, like maybe the first or second week in March, just to give enough time to put together packages, put it online, do some public outreach and say, here's going to be this meeting, one of these, the first or second, first or second week in March or something, just to give it time to do the outreach that we should. And then, yeah, I don't think that there's any time concerns that I'm aware of.
Perfect. So we're on the same page, because that was what I was going to suggest to the committee and to the other members of the public people at March here, is that March, I think, giving itself a month, and there's a few things we could do during that time. Getting the word out, social media via the community. I'm certainly happy to offer myself to have, you know, public sessions where, hey, I will be here, and if you want to talk about the dog park for an hour, I'll be available. I can probably arrange a couple of those for the next month. I encourage other members of the committee to do that, too, if they'd like.
Do something, I mean, do a commercial.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
Walk through all this and then close to that.
That's a great idea. Okay, I'll reach out to Jen Ramsey. And certainly get the press involved. And certainly get the press involved, and let them know what's going on. And, and then, what kind of?
Thing, I, I'll volunteer, because it's very normal, and would be, this seems like the right time. I would, I would reach out directly to the mediator butter, and just make sure that they're specifically aware of this sort of schematic design, and make sure that they're aware of the discussion. Not that they, not that they should be able to stop it, but that they're aware. I mean, that's the most immediate.
Starting by this, parking as far as this way from their house.
Right, right. I think it's only fair at this stage of any project like this, that, especially that mediator butter, I mean, that we can run a number to see if there's some radius of, like, a mailing.
Three or 500 feet.
Yeah, I'm afraid, I'm afraid 300 feet won't cover that much.
I don't think it'll get.
Yeah.
Couple of ounces, right?
If you did 500 feet, Clark Lane, Oliver Street.
Yep.
I think you covered the area where folks would be most impacted.
It gets, yes.
Because it will change the traffic pattern on Oliver Street and on Clark Lane, and the proximity, and the proxim.
Like, I'm sure.
If you do that mailing, not just for Oliver and Clark.
What, you're suggesting all of Oliver, though?
I'm thinking Oliver will be impacted the most. And to have a, just so folks know. In the sense that, I'll do it personally. Can't be done, just so folks know, it may be.
It's random.
Anything we can make, good plans.
I think you'll find Park Lane to be very difficult, because you're going to get a lot of, a lot.
Well, and interestingly, who's just paying, right here is a dog park that's being constructed.
But they can pay.
Yeah, they're buying it there. But I'm saying, that, that's going to create traffic regardless as well, at Lindale. And that will then create.
And the good thing is, it's not a mowing center, it's not.
Six quacks.
Not yet.
Everyone, everyone I've been to, and I've tried it, there's max, I've never seen over, it's usually six cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not rushing.
I've been to eight parks in the state on a Sunday, and it would be the busiest, and I've never seen more than six cars at every one.
So it's not going to be a parade of.
Yeah.
Right. You'll get more people following.
So, the other thing too, in regards to some sort of a public forum, is if we, if we do agree to set a public hearing for first weekend in March, we can certainly convene as property subcommittee, I'm sorry, property committee, prior to that, and have another opportunity with a very structured public speak, for people to give their support, air their grievances, et cetera. So I think that's another built-in public opportunity as well.
Mr. Chair, I would ask, have we gotten any further on cost of maintaining the park? Wherever, wherever it is, if it's on Oliver Street, how much is it going to cost? And do we know what other places charge, if this is a bag?
I can, I could follow up on that. I have a Pioneer Valley Park and Rec meeting next Thursday. So there's going to be 20 park and rec directors at the meeting, and they're a great resource, and many of them have dog parks.
Reason.
And I'll get, I'll get a, yeah, and I'll get a cost estimate, what, what the burden is on their departments. Some of them I know, because I've visited a few, they have DPW, Mowing Forum, and they have other, you know, they don't have their own maintenance staff, so they have other city usually, kind of, resources that take care of them. But I can get a general sense from them.
And we'd like to have all those costs, because I think, no matter where we put the park, and if it was going to be at Nantucket Park, or Oliver Street, or anywhere else, before we go too, too far, we really have to have that number, I think we have to nail down at some point. And it probably is after the design, where it gets nailed down, because I, I know for one concern, I didn't very elect him to vote for anyone that didn't have the funds raised by that point, before we did construction. And I think the point is after the design is made. Does anyone think that we ought to have those figures paid before we do the design?
I don't think before, but I agree with you 100%. If, if this all goes through, and we do get a designer, and we have a design and process, that that then initiates another process, where we, we need to demonstrate robust public input, maybe discuss some sort of committee similar to, like Manhead or National Wannecase forming, make sure that there's significant committee buy-in, and demonstrate both what the costs are, and how we're going to raise this fund. I agree with you 100%. Now, is that valuable prior to the design grant? Yes. Is it necessary? No. But, but it certainly has to happen prior to move forward to the next step, to the construction. But, so, I think it's, it's a bonus that we have it in, in this current phase that we're in, but I don't know if it has to happen, that's just my opinion.
Working on it, since I've started to get numbers, and so we have.
Yeah, so I, I should have numbers by the end of February from any of those dog parks, because they're pretty good about getting information back, so, and before any meeting in March, I could have, you know, just the general cost of each, each department.
If it's as low as $5,000 or $10,000 a year, that's probably something that could be raised by the, if it's much more significant than that, I don't know.
Yeah, you're right.
I have a connection in Fitchburg, who helped build their park, that I can certainly reach out to them. I think.
Alternatively, we could create an ad hoc committee, and if they say, no, just there is something, and have that.
He doesn't know about it.
We've done many, and I've mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
So, we could certainly create an ad hoc committee with a understanding of the, of the.
When do you think that should occur? Now, or after design, or?
Maybe, probably, I don't know. I, I feel, I feel awkward to create that before we've had a meeting, to have people vote, vote on things. Once this, once and if the City Council approves it, we go forward, then we can create an ad hoc committee of community members, whose sole purpose is to figure out how much this would cost.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think, I think.
You're killing me, we're killing.
Joking, right? You didn't say it, I'm joking.
Maybe, it depends on what you have to say.
Well, I'm just thinking, just to put a firepoint on that, that, that perfect notion, but I think, it's actually, I think it, related just on the awarding of a design grant.
Right, yeah.
Because I think, if we apply for a design grant, you know, I, I have kind of said, like, it's, it's not very dramatic to say, oh, we applied for a grant, because we actually don't know if we got it.
Right.
So I think upon award of a design grant, would be, that, then you have all this momentum.
Correct.
And then you have, that's what's going to draw people to meetings that participate, if we actually have. So that was my other comment, so, upon award.
So, Kelsey, Kelsey Rothschild?
Thank you, I just, you mentioned there's trails there now, there's trails in the city parks a little bit?
Informal.
Informal. Well, I was just mentioning.
Lovely. Probably like the dog park in North Hampton now.
Okay.
Not official.
Okay. Well, Kelsey, there, I was mentioning, I think, the added community benefit of having access to trails there, and I don't know how we can add that into it, for people that don't have dogs, or.
Well, this one has to move around, the walk, has to run like an acorn, that's, that was like.
Yeah, I think it was, I think, I think there was, no, I think there was a cost estimate included with that, for a walk.
That, that's, that's nice, acorn, and the.
They have a full walk, walk around.
Inside the fence.
Yeah.
And it tells you how many pence of mile, how many laps you pull.
Yep, they did that, probably.
And there's a little feature.
Any more public input?
Well, I, I don't know if you want to bring it up today, about one of my homework that I did in Provincetown, that I've got photos on here, on the, of the Provincetown dog park, which has been my favorite so far. And they self-funded their park, and they self-funded now, even though I think, I don't think, I think it's City Property now, because they, but they did, they covered everything.
Is this a, is this a request to chair the committee?
Huh?
Is this a request to chair the committee?
Yeah, I'd like, so, but no, I mean, I, this would believe a lot of people, to see how they did it, what they did. They thought of everything.
So if you, I know you, and you've been, you've been wonderful about sending me a lot of this, so.
I don't know how I'd send this, that's what I'm.
Let's find a time to sit down, and I can help disseminate that.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, and we do too, so that we're all on the same page. Because this is going to, having, having already built a playground, I already know the general gist of doing something like this. So, to me, this is.
There's photos, and is there documentation?
There's photos. There's not documentation, because I haven't contacted them yet, because I need to find out who did it, I want to get, you know.
There's no projector in this room, right?
Projector can be, it's easy to set up.
Well, I think either another property committee prior to a public hearing, if we agree to set one, or at that public hearing at the, at the City Council, we should do some little presentation.
Yeah, so what, so maybe if we get together, whoever wants to come to go over this, and I can get ahold of somebody before then.
Mr.?
Who are you pointing to?
One more, one more thing.
I'm pointing to a bag.
The, while I was at, one of the times that acorn, I, somebody came in, drew, parking in, apparently, they have somebody that's a, six hours a week salary, six hours. So they go, she goes over there for an hour, walks it, checks, and that's it. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that would come under your salaries and all that.
Yeah, I'll talk to Chris, and see what his numbers are.
But yeah, he would know, because it's, it's, she is funded by them, but I think he said, and it's not per day, it's six hours, whatever she wants to, she can go over for six hours a day.
Yeah.
I talked to Chris about it.
Yes, I'm going to listen to him. Sorry.
Point order, I find, you can reserve it throughout the week. I'm sorry. So that's a distinct idea. So, I want to, I want to try to wrap this up, actually. So is there any more, any more input? Because I think we have a potential plan. So, I have a few different ideas how we could do this, but I think, I think the easiest thing to do would be to entertain a motion to accept this parcel on Oliver Street as a, to, as to move forward as a proposed site, or to request a, to request the mayor via vote of the City Council for, to move forward with a request for a design grant from the standard foundation.
And allow the other neighborhood to buy, or something.
Oh, we'll, we'll get, we'll get there, but is it, I want to make a motion to that back.
What, what do you think?
Motion to move forward with Oliver Street site, and the one of the ones that pursue the design grant.
We have a motion to accept this as the, as the proposed site for a application for a standard design grant, with a motion.
I can, so.
I'll, I'll second it.
Just something, I have, I mean, just, oh, decisions, selecting site, I thought we were going to leave it open to the public.
Well, if this site or no site.
Okay, we're going to present.
Right.
To a group, have a meeting, and then come back to our, to us, to make a recommendation after that.
But I think we agreed that this is the only site.
I think the discussion would be that, that we accept this site, and then set a public hearing for the whole City Council, to, for, in, for the final vote, if I'm understanding somebody, if the discussion happens then. I'm sorry.
That's higher.
So we have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Aye. So, vote passes three, nothing. I, I, I would like to, I don't, we can have to compare calendars, but I think we should certainly have another property committee meeting before, so the next, the next would be, so we do have another property committee meeting in February. I think the next question, though, is, would, advocating a motion to set a public hearing, potentially March, to bring this to the City Council with the public.
I'd move you set a public hearing in March, second meeting in March.
Which is, so March, it is, so, I think that's the 18th? Am I correct? Because it's the first.
Is it the 3rd Wednesday? Yeah, it's the 18th, it's the 3rd.
Okay. So we have a motion to set a public hearing for this dog park discussion and proposal for a standard design grant with the Oliver parcel. We have a, we have a motion, and we have a second, we have a second from Counselor Rothschild, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? So vote passes three, nothing. And I will, we'll look at our, that also gives us ample time, too, to meet before that succeeds from now.
Right.
Any other final thoughts from the, the other public officials, or members of the public?
I've got the, I've got the photos on here, if anybody wants to come look at them now.
We'll find time to sit down, yeah.
Thank you for doing this.
Oh, thank you for attending.
Are you all strongly supportive of the dog park? Is that?
So the one thing I would ask of the members of the public out of here is, you know, this, this will not be a successful project without many more people coming to these events, to these meetings. So, you know, optimally, we need to see, and I'm in support of this, but I'm in support of it only in so much that the, the public clearly backs it. And so, I need to see 20 people at a meeting at least, to really be able to know that this isn't just some sort of high dream that, of ours, so.
About 15 times a day, it's hard.
Right, so, we could certainly settle later, property being for next time, TBD, as well as, you know, the City Council meeting at the 6th.
Which I think is, that would be the key meeting. The, the public hearing would be the key meeting for more people to be at. But I think that's, that's the only concern of having more meetings, is you're stretching people out pretty thin, rather than concentrating on one place where, you know, to make it convincing our next full City Council, and then vote, so.
I thought you were saying more people, because you wanted to have the friends who start kind of coalesce, if that's what I was.
Well, there's that as well. I mean, I think we need to really start getting some buzz among interested, you know, people of the public. So, that, there's that as well.
I would agree, that that could take off, because the friends will really, it's something.
Should we bring our dogs?
I think that'll, I think that'll help.
I'm just saying.
Maggie's going to be so helpful.
Bring it.
Can I bring any?
We can make some bandanas. You know? We could breed of dogs as the City Council's.
So we can, we create, maybe, I want to get up with this 01027 dog shirt.
Yeah.